Am I ready? I'd like to call to order the Town Council Work Session, Tuesday, January 8th. The time is 7:38. And if we could please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi. The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome the Town Council to our first meeting of the year. This is our first capital improvement budget work session. And tonight we'll be discussing the budget message, the debt service schedules, the long-term financial program, municipal bonding programs, the proposed capital budget, general municipal and utilities program, and the Town Manager proposed capital improvement, including the long-term. So at this time, I also want to thank all of the staff for being here tonight. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alfred.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The presentations tonight is not going to follow the book exactly, so I'll tell you where the pages are. I've also provided you with a PowerPoint which I'll be working off of tonight, which, for the most part, takes the relevant components out of the budget document itself. So if you want to follow with both the budget document and the PowerPoint, I can lead you in that direction. I do want to also say the presentation is on the web at this point, so anyone who is at home that is streaming does have the ability to have the PowerPoint as well as the budget document in their review. Each of those are available through the Town's website. And starting out tonight, I've got approximately 110 slides. So if we look at one minute per slide, we're talking about two hours. I'm going to move the process along as quickly as possible, but at the same time, if there are specific questions from the council, please stop me at any time so that we can address the question right then and there. If we start out, why do we do the capital improvement program? Alan and I have been asking that question to ourselves for years. We haven't really come up with a good answer at this point, other than, there's really three components. One is, we want to be able to provide a community needs statement for infrastructure. Two, we want to then be able to prioritize and come up with an implementation schedule that's associated with meeting those needs. And three, we want to ensure that the financial aspects of the plan are something that are doable, that they'll fit and be integrated into the overall budget program. So those are really the three objectives that we start out with in terms of the capital program. The focus of the program is to review all of the prior capital projects, ensure that those projects are still justified, or that the timing of when those programs will be done fits within the six-year window of the capital improvement program. Also, our objective has been to be able to reduce debt service as a component of the budget, to be able to free up dollars that are providing an opportunity for us to provide some needed tax relief during rough economic times. Also is to identify all the lead projects' funding sources. You really need to look at capital projects three and four years ahead of when the project is going to go in the ground, to determine whether or not there's other funding sources that are available, whether it's grants, whether it's low-interest loans, or programs where there could be cost-sharing with other entities. So with a six-year plan, it provides us with an opportunity not to be reacting to needs, but rather planning for the needs as we go forward. The CIP also has two components. One component is an explanation of all of the long-term projects within the six-year schedule, and there's also the capital budget. The capital budget is what will go into the 2013-14 years budget as a contribution. This is the pay-as-you-go, or pogo, that goes to various capital reserves. In terms of additional background, the Town uses approximately 18 different reserve funds, where we accumulate dollars necessary for projects in advance of the projects going to construction, or for improvements, such as Town Hall Reserve. Town Hall Reserve is for building improvements that are necessary here, roofs, painting, carpentry, anything that has to be accomplished. Those dollars are then, through the pay-as-you-go portion, are put into those reserves, so as we need to do work, we can get the work done. Also, we also plan for replacement of items. But with replacement of items, even if we budget something for the 2013-14 year, let's take a vehicle replacement, that vehicle won't be replaced, even if the funding's available for it, until the need to replace the vehicle is found. So what we're attempting to do is to make sure that the resources are available in advance of the need to be able to expend or to put the programs into place. Without a capital improvement program, you react to the problems that come forward, and sometimes it's much more expensive to be able to address those problems if you're not providing for the proper maintenance. What is capital improvements? Capital improvements are facilities and infrastructure, such as the water, sewer, bridges, streets, wastewater facilities. And they really should be in excess of $10,000 in value and be of a non-reoccurring tangible nature. What that means is that if you're going to be spending $10,000 a year on a given item, it's not really a capital improvement. If you're going to build a building that's going to have more than a, have a useful life of at least five years, or buy a truck that's going to have a useful life, and it's not a reoccurring expense, then it would be included within the capital improvement program. We take a very broad view of capital improvements in terms of our development. We would rather chronicleize and review projects that may not fit the specific definition of capital improvements, so that we can provide better measures and controls over the things that we need to accomplish, and where the funding is going to be made available. So, as a, for instance, when we look at monies that are set aside each year for cable replacement within our communications division, it's $5,000 a year. We still take it through the reserve fund, because we may go three years without spending any of that money, and then we may spend all of the money in one year. So, because there may be economies of scale as to not requiring mobilizations to occur of projects three times when you can do it once. The capital improvement program is looking at about a $338,000 change over the current year adopted budget. I'm not really all that sure that a comparison within capital improvement programs is an appropriate measure, because when you look at the programs, you have to look that some projects come in and some projects go out. As a, for instance, you may have new projects that, or projects that are outgoing. We just finished a revaluation program, that's gone, so there's $400,000 less. The base isn't the same from one year to the next. But overall, you want to look at the programs being about the same dollar amounts. The proposed bonding component of the capital improvement program, we're looking to borrow over the next six years approximately $10,250,000. Of that dollar amount, it's about $1 million more than what the current year was. The reason why is that there's one additional bonding project that's being recommended at this point, and that's $1 million to be set aside for the installation of the waterline loop that's necessary to provide redundancy in the water system, for the South Shore Water System. But when you look at the $338,000, it really isn't that much of a reduction. The $25,000 reduction in the open space program is directly related to there being $25,000 less proposed over the six years for land purchases. On recreation, it's $278,000 less. That was because there was changes in the Marina Park Program, and the $357,000 on the municipal program is directly related to the revale program being completed. So, I think that what we're still looking at is approximately a $20 million program over a six-year period, with approximately half of that coming through long-term borrowing, if the program goes forward as presented. The next chart shows the annual funding element. We're looking at the annual funding element, or pay-as-you-go portion, going up $47,000, when we look at the four funds. One thing that's important for council to remember is that any of the capital improvements associated with the water fund or the wastewater funds are paid through rate base. They do not impact the property taxes. They only come through the user fees that are charged and associated with each of those utilities that are provided. I also want to comment, we're showing a $35,000 decrease on the school fund. That's not a fair representation. In essence, last year, the $290,000 that was adopted, the council revised, based on the staff's recommendation, where we took $60,000 out of the 2011-12 year. So, the true capital improvements within the school fund were $230,000, so essentially it's a $25,000 increase in actual tax effort that would be necessary to fund the program as presented by the schools. It can show the 35, in fact, I think I mentioned this at the initial budget hearing. Next slide, and this is on page four, if you're following with the budget document itself, is really a general explanation of the capital projects, the long-term projects, and what the revisions, if any, have been over the one-year period, for the six years that was looked at last year, to the six years that are being looked at this year. If there's any questions on any of that, I'd be glad to go over it. I want to jump now to page 11. Page 11 deals with background information that I provide on a yearly basis, as far as demographic information about the community. This is also important, because whenever we do any long-term borrowing, we have to go through getting bond ratings. The bond rating companies such as Moody's or Standard and Poor's is interested, not just in what you're looking to put into bonding, but also your ability to be able to pay, or willingness to pay within the community. They want to also look at what type of community they're going to be placing a bond rating on. Is it a growing community? Is it a community that's got an eroding tax base? A community that's got good economic development opportunities available? Things that they would look at is growth within the community. One of those is population. Again, population increase over the past 10-year period showed about 10%. I will disagree with that number for a couple of reasons. If we move on to the next chart, and that's on page 11 as well, and I think this is a very important chart for the council to be aware of, because what this chart is looking at is the differential in population shifts between 1990, 2000, and 2010. And some of the more interesting information that's presented here is when you look at the age of 14 or less, there's been a decline in 917 residents during that 10-year period. That directly relates to the enrollment reductions that we've seen in our education program. What you also see is that the component of the population over 60 has also increased substantially by 1876. So what we're seeing is, as land development has changed, and we've seen more development directly related to plus 55 housing, that we're seeing a change in the composition of the community age or the demographics of the community. One of the other interesting ones is you see the change in ages 15 to 24, where there's a sizable increase. That increase really isn't a real increase. That increase is there because when you look at non-institutionalized group quarters, which is the second part of that chart, you can see that there was only 4,000 people at URI in dorms in 2000, and there was 281 in 2010. Well, really what happened there was during the census in 2000, there was a closed dormitory, and, or a couple of closed dormitories. You can see back in 1990, there was still over 5,000. So we really didn't see an increase in the population there. We saw an increase based on the bed availability. But what that did is that made up almost 50% of the population increase that we saw. So the real growth within the community was not associated with a 10% increase on general population. It really was a recognition that the beds were on campus for about half of it. So you really saw a 5% or so increase in general population, and what you also saw is an aging population moving into the community, a plus 55. So, this is important census information, and it's also good for the planning board to take a look at what the implications are of the direction that they take land use planning, and what the potential for development is. Obviously, development, whether it's of a residential or a commercial nature, is directly associated with demand. So the demand was there for the non-single-family units in development over the past 10 years, and they developed, we're considering to see the plus 55 housing as one of the driving forces in the construction market today. So we're going to see, as we go forward into the 2015-2020 year, that we'll probably continue to see declines in the younger population, the school-age population, and a greater emphasis as far as the aging population. This eventually will come back to the council in the form of demands for services that may not be directly related to the service deliveries that we provide today, particularly in a housing, an elderly market. Those may be driving increased cost demands associated with EMS services, maybe with senior services, of any number of nature. So, census information isn't something to just look at the end-line numbers, it's to look at how those numbers move. And you can also see that when we look at occupied, owner-occupied and rental-occupied units, that we're seeing an increase in the renter-occupied, those are the condominium, some of the condominiums that have gone into rental markets, where we're seeing that become a larger share of the community's residential base. Other community factors that we look at is median single-family housing prices. South Kingston, for the average from June through, January through June of this year, was at $280,000. But I want to caution people that when you talk about the median single-family house price, that's all sales that are occurring in the community. So some of those sales may not be arm's length in nature. They may be forced sales, they may be foreclosures, that would have some balancing factor with that. However, while we're at 280,000, we're $90,575 above what the Rhode Island market was showing as median family housing for that same six-month period. To look more retrospectively at where we've been, you can see that while we've got a 280 median family income, our assessment values, and this is on page 13, our assessment values that are about $348,000. And you can also see with this chart, that this looks at what your tax levy was to the average assessment values in the community, and you can see really over the last five-year period, that there's been very little change in tax effort requirements associated with the average house values. So, I think that we have accomplished a great deal over that period of time, in terms of being able to hold back tax increases, particularly in light of the reductions that we've seen in the general aid to cities and towns, particularly in the motor vehicle area. When we look at the average single-family taxes, we can see that for 2012-13, the school portion was $3,856, and the municipal was at $1,192. And there's been some minimal changes with that, as you can see from the bar chart, over the past several years. One of the other things we'd like to look at is where we stand as far as unemployment is concerned within the community. And I think that the chart on page 13 provides a, the warning signs that the council needs to look at in terms of looking at budget needs. The community is still dealing with poor financial conditions as a result of the recession. We're looking at, as of September, a 7.9% unemployment rate. Our unemployment rate should be in the area of 4% to 4.5%. When I checked on this today, the numbers for the month of October had grown to 8.4%, and the numbers grew to 9% as of November, close of November. So, we're continuing to see an up and down, but the up and down is within the 9% to 10% range, rather than seeing it going down into the six or fives at this point. So we're continuing to see a market that, we're not seeing a lot of change in the amount of jobs that are available. In fact, the number of people looking for work over that three-month period from September has increased from 1,294 that were deemed as unemployed, up to 1,499 as of the end of November. And at the same time, what we've seen is the workforce itself, those people that are employed, only going up by less than 100 people in the three-month period. So, we're continuing to experience high unemployment for South Kingston. We are not at the position where we can say, there's good evidence to see that next year, when we look at this, we're going to see the declines in place. Some of the projections that I presented to you on the initial budget hearing indicated that recent estimates are that we're looking possibly into 2016 or 2017 for market turnarounds. Some of that is also going to be affected by what happens in Washington over the next three months, in terms of dealing with the debt limit and dealing with sequestration, or reductions in federal spending. Understand that reductions in federal spending are going to have a profound impact on the local economy, where it affects any industry or provider of services that is related to some of those federal cutbacks. As far as our tax roll is concerned, it's been stable over the past several years. I've noted here where the revaluation years are in place. We are anticipating the new revaluation, which will be as of December 31st of 2012. Some good news on that front is that as of January 1st last year, we were looking at increased property values in terms of new constructions of around $17 million for the first six months of the year. This year, we're up at about $29.9 million, or almost $30 million. So, there's an appreciable increase in the rate of growth that's occurring there. There's certainly still a long way before the end of the certification period. But again, we're going to have to go with a whole new business base, because the new taxable role will be based on a full revale that will be completed as of values as of December 31st of 2012. So, that doesn't affect the tax levy. What it affects is what the tax rate would be to generate the same number of tax dollars. But, as you can see, one of the problems that we have from a bond rating perspective is that with the last revaluation that occurred in 2009, we lost $1 billion in taxable value. That $1 billion in taxable value affects a lot of the debt ratios that a Moody's or a Standard and Poor's would look at, such as per capita debt, or debt associated with per capita debt as a percentage of per capita income, those types of things. We're still in good shape. However, it'll be interesting to see where we are in the 2012 market, once the new land schedules and construction, build-out construction schedules have been put into place. Initial estimates, I think in the Providence revale, which is occurring the same year, was continued losses from their 2009 numbers of about 10%. I don't have any way of judging at this point whether that's atypical or something that we'll see the same type. We'll have to wait until we get closer to certification to be able to make those presentations. Right now, revale, we're looking at hopefully having values out by the end of February, I believe. So at that point, we'll have a much better handle as to what the implications will be for tax rates associated with the tax levy that would be necessary for the 2013-14 year. Again, as I mentioned, we haven't seen a lot of growth. Also, over the last two years, we've lost a considerable amount of personal property value associated with business equipment that ceased to exist at APC. We don't expect that that'll have a profound impact on role development for the 2013-14 year, but we will have to take a look at that. One of the other things that is provided in the demographic section, which is presented on pages 15 through 22, is a reprint of the three-year estimate from the American Communities Survey that's put out through the U.S. Census Bureau. There's a lot of good data there that looks at various components of our community, and what we try to do with the capital budget is to put all of the financial and demographics information into one document, to provide residents, as well as persons looking at the Town's financial position, into one document, so that they, we can provide full disclosure. I want to move on at this point to pages 26 in the document. And page 26 of the document deals with municipal budget trends, and most of these the council has already seen, we talked about at the initial budget hearing. I don't want to go into any detail with that unless council has questions on it. All I can say to you is that if you want to understand where our money comes from, and where our money goes, and what the relationship is over the past five years, these, those two pages, pages 26 and 27, provide a good deal of data. And one of the more interesting things is that when you look at page 27, and you look at the bottom on municipal expenditures, both Town and School, what you see on that chart is that for the 2012-13 year, you're actually spending $573,000 less than five years ago. And that's not a mistake. That's what was budgeted for the 2012-13 year at $83,222,000, is below $572,000, below what was budgeted in this 78 year at $83,795,000. Now, certainly, we've had reductions in school enrollments, we've had reductions in debt service associated with schools, and municipal programs which have assisted with that. But, the disconcerting thing is that while we've had reductions in the expenditure level, and this is something that people always say, "What we need to do is to cut spending." Well, we have cut spending. But what you also have to look at is what the property tax distribution has been. And you go back to page 26, page 26, when we look at the revenue stream, you can see that current year property taxes in the 78 year represented 83.3% of our budget. In 2013, even though we're $570,000 below five years ago in expenses, our property tax is now up to 88.8, or almost 89%. So almost 89 cents of every dollar that we're spending now is having to come through the property tax. So, I think we have done a very good job in terms of cutting expenditures where possible, yet, and been able to hold back property taxes increases, yet at the same time, we're seeing a much greater burden coming from the property taxes to be able to pay for the cost of local services. So, these are important charts that will give you So these are important charts that will give you where we've been and where we're going and answer some of the concerns that constituents may have in terms of how do we spend money or why do we spend money and where are we in relation to increase taxes on a year-to-year basis. I want to move now to page 32. Page 32 is a listing of the projects that are in the 6-year long-term program. The breakout here is to show you projects that have approved bonds and projects that have proposed bonds and where the other funding sources are. So here, what we're looking at is saying that if we use, for instance, the Neighborhood Guild. Neighborhood Guild has a $1 million program of which we have $1 million available to spend that's already been authorized. When you look at the Public Works Improvement Program, we want to spend $2.5 million in bonds, but we need to get authorization from the general public on a referendum for 2.1 of that 2.5. So while the council can endorse a capital budget, it can't pay for the capital budget with bonding without the general public's authorization. So we break out proposed bonds and we break out the approved bonds. Secured and available funds, those are the monies that are held in the capital reserve funds that will assist in paying down the price of the projects. Future CIP, that's the money that on a yearly basis we budget in the budget document itself where property taxes are generated to be able to pay for the pay-as-you-go. Many of the pay-as-you-go dollars go into those capital reserve funds so that by the time we get the project underway, we've got the funds available and there's no sharp increase in our expenditures to be able to do individual projects. We also have grants or impact fees as potential funding sources. So what this chart tries to do is to say, okay, if we're going to spend $20.379 million, where's the money coming from? This provides that detail, and it also shows that in the perfect presentation here of where the monies are going to come from, 10%, 50% of it will come from bonds. Next page, page 33, shows the bonds that we expect to use during the next six years. So what we would look at is the Neighborhood Guild in the 14-15 year, there would be $1 million worth of improvements that would be there. We'll talk about that tomorrow night with the second session. We'd have $1,500 in 14-15 for the road program and the school facilities would have $1 million. We will deal with the schools, not this week, but next week, I believe it's on the 16th. One of the things that I have concern with is that when we look at the schools, there's three different bonding placeholders that we have put into the budget document on their behalf. There needs to be a better needs assessment of the facilities at the school level. And I mentioned this in front of the school committee, so I don't feel as if we're talking out of school, no pun intended. But there needs to be an analysis as to whether the projects that they had put into the capital budget several years ago are in fact legitimate projects today. Because my concern is that if we find some type of building defects or a need for improvements that haven't been identified, it may require us to change the debt structure. So I think what's important is that during at least the 13-14 year, they need to have a review made of all of the facilities and determine from that whether or not the 2.6 million, how that should be spent, or whether the 2.6 million is too much or too little for what they need over the six-year period. My main concern is in the 2017-18 year. That $1 million that's shown for borrowing has been targeted really over the last several years as monies that would be set aside for the Mattoonik and West Kingston schools for their heating plant and electrical, those buildings originally were electric heat buildings. The question now, since those buildings have been online since 1975, is whether or not the power plant itself, whether there's replacement parts available or what needs to be done with those schools. The only way that can be properly analyzed is with an engineering review, with an electrical engineering to make that determination. Why it's $500,000 for each school, there's really been no documentation on that. I've carried the numbers, but what we've indicated is that there's a need for better identification as to what their capital needs are. Because the worst thing we can do is to say we have a six-year schedule and then not follow a six-year schedule. The other thing that's important is that the state, and I'll mention this again with the schools here, is that right now, new school bonds are subject to a 35% reimbursement on principal and interest from the state, provided that they meet and have been approved through the state's capital improvement program for schools. And that goes through the Department of Education. So they have to submit applications to be able to have projects approved that would be eligible for the 35%. Obviously, we don't want to be spending money if the 35% reimbursement isn't available. So we have to make sure that the school department has submitted the proper applications and has received affirmation or approvals on those applications at the funding levels that are necessary to be able to get the 35%. I mean, this is important to the state as well because the state, if they're dealing with 38 school districts, can't assume that they're going to have 35% of whatever those schools want to borrow. And one of the problems several years ago was that there wasn't a lot of state review made on what municipal school districts were putting in terms of buildings. A lot of the school districts were criticized for doing no maintenance on their buildings and then coming in to refurbish at higher costs than if they had done the maintenance. Obviously, the maintenance wouldn't have been subject to any reimbursement. And based on the formulas that are used for education, building, reimbursement, it's based on need. So some of the urban areas may have been getting as much as 80 cents back on the dollar rather than the floor that we're at at 35%. So it's an important project. It's not a bureaucratic game that the state's playing. What they're saying is if you need the improvement, be able to prove that you need the improvement, let us then be able to budget for it in a future year so that when we have to put our budget together as the state education, we can say what the debt service requirements are that we have to reimburse for all of the school districts that are out there. Enough said on that, but I do have concerns with that. We certainly analyze each of the different projects that are municipal in nature. We do not have that same level of due diligence available to us when it comes to school buildings. So that is something that we have mentioned to staff, and I've said, I think, over the last two years at each of the budget hearings, it's still an important concern. For the bonds that haven't been approved yet that would be incorporated into the capital improvement program, we would look that the council would need in the 2014 session of the General Assembly to get referendum questions approved for different bond issues to go on the November 2014 ballot. And that would be for the school improvements for $1.6 million. And again, I would like to make sure that the 1.6 is the right number as well as the East Mattoonik Beach bypass at the million and the road improvements. Remember that the capital budget is a financial planning document. It isn't a budget per se. What we're trying to do with a capital improvement program is to determine what the projects are, what the cost should be, and to refine those costs as we get close to the shovel-ready. When we talk about the project with the East Mattoonik Beach water main bypass, we have no way of knowing whether that $1 million is a legitimate price at this point. Council approved in December the contract to have engineering work done to determine what the cost would be and where the corridor would be. Until we get that information, we won't know what those costs are. But right now, our snapshot in time tonight is that we would have $4.7 million that would go to referendum. By 2014, there may be adjustments that are made on that. But that's the beauty of doing the capital improvement program on an annual basis is you're always updating on what you've already done, exploring how those revisions have been made, and then trying to fit those pieces together. Next chart is on the municipal bonding history. And this is, and what we would like to do here is I want to move on to page 61, and we're going to deal with a financial analysis. And I'm going to go pretty quickly through this because the data's there for people to look at. This is just a demonstration of how debt service in relation to the overall, what the debt level has been for the community. If you can look at this chart, and again, it's on page 61 in the document, what we're looking at is we've gone from a $41.5 million bonded indebtedness all the way down to $19.7 in the 2012-2013 year. So based on the money that was appropriated in 12-13, once we pay off those debt service, the debt service requirements, we will owe a total of $19.7 million. That's down from 2004 where we were owing $41 million. What that translates into is major reductions in what the debt service requirements are. On page 62, we show the four projects and where the money, how much of that money is coming in through the bonds. As you can see, we're not looking for any bonding on the open space program. The $4,150,000 in recreation programs is directly related to the community gym proposal. The $2.5 million is all road improvements under general municipal programs. The school's $2.6 million, and the million is with the placeholder for the waterline extension. Moving on to page 62, we also have a chart here on the projected gross bonded debt level, where it's going to go. We know it went from $41 million down to $19.7. Well, where is it scheduled to go at this point? We're going to borrow $10.5 million, but over the six-year period, we're only going to still, we're still going to see a decline in our debt level. Our debt level's going to go down to 15.5. Why is that? Because you're borrowing 10.25, you're starting to pay it back, plus you're continuing to pay back the other outstanding bonds. So you can borrow the 10.5 and you'll still see a reduction in the debt level for the community as we go forward. On page 63 to page 65, we also talk about third-party revenues. Third-party revenues are those revenues that offset debt service costs that are not coming from the property tax base. Those would be state library aid construction. Right now, any project before 1991 gets library construction aid. We're in our last year of getting aid there. That was $8,811, that's all. So there's no big number that's there with the library construction. School building construction aid, I've already talked to you about that issue in terms of the certificate of need that's required from the state. But that's a major source of revenue at 35% of your debt because it's not just the debt principal, it's the debt principal and interest associated with the projects that are approved by the state. Fair share development fees, these are the so-called impact fees that the town collects on behalf of recreation and on behalf of school projects. I will say to you that fair share development fees are under attack by the building industry at this point, and one of their objectives would be to outlaw continued collection of fair share fees. That's something that we will see probably at the General Assembly within the next few years, if not this year. Neighborhood Guild, any bond money that we put out on behalf of guild renovations will be paid for through revenues available within the endowment fund for the guild. So there's no property tax impact associated with the $1 million that we would borrow on behalf of the guild. Waste water, when we put the Diane Drive wastewater system into place, we placed liens of $18,069 on each house. Those folks have the ability to pay over a 20-year period and over the same period of time that we've got the debt. So they're paying the debt that's associated with the borrowing that was necessary for that sewer construction project that provided services on Berth, Alton, and Diane Drive as well as a small portion of the Old North Road. Real estate, conveyance taxes, that's also money that's collected through the clerk's office on any transaction that occurs, real estate transaction that occurs. $1.70 of every $2.20 per thousand that's collected goes into the open space reserve fund and then is used to pay down debt service associated with open space acquisitions. So that's another important revenue source to lessen the property tax burden associated with our borrowing program. Water system user fees, when we look at the bonding that's going to be necessary on the water system, we're going to have to look at a surcharge on the customers to be able to put that loop line in. And I'll talk about that in greater detail a little bit later tonight. Superfund, superfund reserve provides some funding to offset. Right now, we had borrowed $2,950,000 for the two superfund sites that we closed out at Rose Hill and Plains Road. The debt service is being paid for through assets that are held in that reserve fund. That's not going to continue probably past the next five to six years because I think that by then, we'll probably be out of reserve fund dollars. But we are looking at being able to balance that. In the consent agreement and record of decision, we have commitments over the next 28 years to continue to pay back the school, to pay back the state for their portion of remediation costs as well as our costs associated with that $2.9 million. So that's going to be with us probably for another, you know, at this point, about 16 years on most of that program as a, and we'll probably see another five years at minimum of funding without it having impact on property taxes. When we look at the different, the impact of the non-property tax on the 10.25, we're expecting that only $2.9 million of the 10.25 million is going to come through third-party revenues. And the lion's share of that is either the money associated with the guild for the recreation program for that rental or through the utility or the 35% reimbursement from the state for the school project. The rest of that borrowing, $7.3 million, will have to come through increased efforts in property tax support for debt service. But having said that, what I want you to look at is that if we have an estimated value of a house assessment of $350,000 today, and we assume that same house five years from now, based on a 2% escalator, would be worth $372, the debt service associated with property taxes will actually be down from $187 this year down to $143. So we're still moving in the right direction. The next set of slides, which starts on page 67, looks at different financial considerations that we deal with rating agencies. And the first one looks at debt service as a percentage of the tax levy. And you can see, it was as high as 6%. It's down to about 4.1. These charts also show two different ways of looking at debt. One is the whole debt without the reimbursement from the third-party revenues. The more solid line is the net debt. Net debt service is what our debt service cost is that's directly related to property tax burden. So you can see, when we look at our total tax levy in the 12-13 year, 6% of debt service is part of our expenditure program, but only 3.4% is the real debt that is part of our expenditure program, but only 3.4% is the real debt that comes out of the property taxes. And even with borrowing the next $10.25 million, it would be down to about 2.3% by the time we get out to 1819, provided our program doesn't change. Now remember, by the time we get to 2015, 16, or 1617, there may be other capital projects that are identified so that there may still be another $10 million out there, even though we borrowed $3 million or $4 million of the target that's in place tonight. So you're always going to be looking at new needs. It's not as if the $10.25 million is going to be zeroed out by the time you get to 1819. This is a living document that just is updated on an annual basis. But when we look at this, we have the capacity to be able to service considerably more debt than what we currently are. If we needed to, we'd have the ability to borrow that and still be able to manage those funds properly. Next chart on page 68 shows the bonded debt as a percentage of the tax base. Moody's in 2011 said that for a community of less than 50,000, net debt should be at, for a AAA community would be at .61, and for AA at .96. So we're below that already as far as the debt level that we are. So we're very strong as far as that indicator is concerned. On page 68 as well, we show financial consideration on the assessment value per capita. Moody's said that for a AAA community, there should be $160,428 per capita in terms of taxable value per person in town. And on the AA communities, which we are, at $83,540. And you can see, we're very close on the AAA level at $143,000. I also took the retrospective look because you can see that the values, how that changed when we lost that billion dollars in taxable property in the 2009 revaluation year. One other measure that I note in the budget document that isn't charted is that Moody's looks at what's the percentage of your tax levy that comes from your top 10 taxpayers. They think Moody's indicates that it should be less than 5.3%. South Kingston, we're at 4.2, so we beat the benchmark. On page 70, we show what the per capita debt as a percentage of per capita income is. The general treasurer's office issued a report in 2011 that said per capita debt as a percentage of adjusted gross income statewide was at 7.32%. That was the state average. South Kingston's was at 2.81%. So we're well below that benchmark as well, although I would caution that I'm not sure that the average level in the state of Rhode Island is the benchmark that we want to compare ourselves to. But we're at a 2.81 level, which is almost a third of what it was on a statewide basis. The next chart on page 69 shows that in 2012, the general treasurer's said that the average debt per capita for Rhode Island communities inclusive of capital leases. Many communities will buy equipment on terms, copy machines that they may borrow the money in a lease agreement, which is really a lease purchase. When you look at the lease purchases plus the debt service, because those are committed encumbrances on the town's balance sheet, that the average was $1,695, where South Kingston was at $793. So what we can see is that even when we look at just our debt per capita at 1417, the 1417, we really do not have a lot of capital leases that would be in place that would jump that number up. How she came up with her number, I'm not sure. But our debt per capita is well below what the state averages are. And as we go forward, we're looking at 2012 being at 731, we're going to continue to decline. Again, as you increase your debt level with the new borrowings, you'll see some of those numbers stabilize, but then they won't continue to plummet at the rate that they have over the past six years. But we're still moving in a proper direction. On page 70, the debt service as a percentage of operating revenues. Standard and Poor's says not to exceed 7%. Moody's has dropped this as a benchmark review. The reason that they've dropped it is that they said that with all the refinancing that's occurring of municipal bonds, that this isn't a proper measure to benchmark any longer. We've kept it in because Moody's still, Standard and Poor's still has it not to exceed a 7%, and we're certainly well below that bench. The existing debt retirement, this is another measure that rating agencies are looking at. And what you can see is that if we're at the $19.7 million for 2013, we're going to drop to $8.9 million, we're going to drop to $6.7 million as we go forward if we didn't borrow any of that $10,250,000. So if we just said, we're not, we're swearing off all borrowing, we're not going to do any projects that require borrowing, we would end up dropping to $6.7 million. Now, that's not a realistic way of looking at it, but what this chart does show you is that if you didn't borrow anything more, your debt level would decrease by 89.6% over a six-year period. The benchmark for that is that you want to pay off a 20-year bond with every 10 years to pay 50%. You're paying off 89% in less than 10 years. So our rate of debt amortization is considerably higher than what needs to be, but it also provides us with greater flexibility as we move forward to be able to continue to address new capital needs. Again, the projected bonded debt level, I've talked about, I'm not going to go through that chart, which is also on page 72 in the document. One last chart, which is the unassigned general fund balance. I just wanted to touch on that because each year, what we're seeing is changes in the identification of what fund balance is. Right now, I think that there's four different categories within fund balance. It's now been changed that really what we used to call undesigned to a great degree, and it's not 100% matching, is now unassigned fund balance. When we look at unassigned fund balance, we're looking that as of June 30 of 2012, we had $9.6 million unassigned. That's equal to 13.1% of our budget for the 1213 year. When you look at best management practices from the Government Finance Officers Association, their recommendation is that you hold two months of operating budget costs as an unassigned fund balance. If we had that, it would put us at $12.2 million up from the 9.6. I'm not at all concerned at a level, I think the 13% level is adequate, particularly in view of the fact that we hold considerable capital reserves that could be assigned by the council where there are emergency conditions that needed to be addressed. The council has adopted in prior years, a debt management policy, and the debt management policy looks at a range up to the 16.6%. But the 13% is more than adequate based on our review of what our needs are, and also the availability of other resources, where those resources needed to be made available without additional borrowing requirements. That goes through the financial analysis, the demographics, and the budget message. The next part of the presentation starts on page 45 and page 46 of the document, and that is a review, what we're going to do is to review all the projects other than those associated with recreation and senior programs tonight that are in the six-year long-term program. So the first ones that come to review is on the long-term municipal projects is the transportation improvement program on page 45. Transportation improvement program really provides services for a number of different types of infrastructure activities, both arterial and collector roads that need to be reconstructed or expanded, pavement overlay requirements, stormwater regulations, bridge and dam reconstruction, sidewalks, and maintenance of our public facility, public works facility. All of those are contained within the program. And when you look at the page 46 on the document, you see that the overall program over the six-year period is that we're suggesting that we would be spending $8,430,000 over the next six years on various components, whether it's arterial roads, collector roads, sidewalks, and we'll walk through those items. But I think the most important thing on this chart is that what are the components made up of the revenues? Again, we've talked about third-party revenues paying for debt service. We also have to look at what are the other funds that are being used? When we appropriate money through the capital budget on a yearly basis, what we're doing is then transferring those into the transportation improvement fund. So you can see, annual capital budget transfer is $3,890,000. For the 1314 year, when we get to that, it's $640,000 that we're recommending that would be part of your pay-as-you-go budget. That pay-as-you-go budget will put 640. Over the following five years, the remaining monies to come up to that $3,890,000 would be necessary. So again, the only way we're going to be able to do this project is if the pay-as-you-go portion and the capital projects are in sync, which means that you have to dedicate those dollars through the capital budget to be able to run your long-term programs as well because a good portion of the funding for those long-term programs come from the pay-as-you-go. When we look at the, at page 111, and I apologize for making you jump around, but you don't need to look at page 111, this is the chart. What we've done is we've shown you over the next six years what roads will be addressed through the program in each of the different elements, whether it's reconstruction, such as what was done on Schoolhouse Road, or whether it's overlays, or whether it's the reconstruction that occurred on Stony Fort. And these are all things that council saw on their tour this year. And what this shows is what are those projects that we expect to go, go on over that six-year period? What we're also showing you is projects in the 1213 year, current year, some of which are yet to be completed, but will be completed this spring. Also, the key here is that if they're not completed in this spring, they may be completed next fall. The monies here do not go back to general fund balance, they stay within the capital reserve itself. The reason they stay within the capital reserve is that many times, projects take much longer than you would anticipate because they need regulatory approvals through state agencies, or there may be requirements for additional funding based on cost escalations that were not anticipated. And again, go back to the fact that the capital improvement program is a planning document for financial purposes rather than a budget document. So what we're trying to do here is to say, these are all the projects that we want to do. This is when, in a perfect world, we would schedule them to be completed. Yet, if they're not completed, it doesn't mean that the money disappears, and it doesn't mean the need for that project disappears, it just means that some of that stuff may get backed up. Now, same thing would hold true with all of your capital reserve funds. But I think this is important because there's been a couple of times where we've had budget hearings, where we've had members of the public come in and say, gee, you've got all this money sitting there, you could do away with the tax increase because you could just take them out of all the capital funds. Well, yeah, you could, but if you did that, one year, you'd be in real terrible shape the next year. One, you wouldn't get your projects done, and two, more importantly, you would have built yourself an operating deficit. But this is the project schedules that we're looking at. A great emphasis is being placed on arterial road overlays, and we'll get into the detail of that when we get into the year-to-year comparison. The, so we'll look at that chart a little bit more when we get into the projects unless there's questions on it. I'd like to move on and keep this process going. On page 47, we document projects that may not have any monies going into for the six years, but projects that could in fact come to us where we need to revise the budget next year. Let's say a piece of land became available that the town council felt was important for us to purchase. We have bonding authorization from 2004 to be able to purchase land. This isn't for open space purposes. This would be like what we bought with Dominic Savio, property that would be used for recreational purposes, active play space, or for building sites where we would have a school construction or the senior center. The authority is there, and again, this was pre-planning. This was, get the authorization to be able to have the dollars if a situation occurred where the council needed to move on it. So you have the authorization. If we had to put that into the bond market, we could. There's nothing scheduled at this point, but it could go forward if the council so directed. Next project that's listed and shown on page 47 and 48 is the revaluation program. With property revaluation, the one that's being completed this year is not shown in the capital budget for obvious reasons. It will be completed in the current fiscal year. Since it's completed in the current fiscal year, it falls off the books. What we're looking at is what happens over the next six years? Well, what's going to happen over the next six years is we're going to have two statistical revaluations that are going to be required. State law requires us every three years to do a statistical revale, and in the ninth year, to do a full revaluation. So in 2012, we're doing the full, we'll do in 2015 and 2018 the statistics. You'll see there the state reimbursement shown. The state under statute is required to reimburse us at approximately $11 per parcel on the statistical, and we're expecting that to be 12 by the time we get to the 18 year. So we've got monies available because the full revale cost us considerably less than we had budgeted, which is good news, but it stayed within the program, which means we don't need to raise those dollars over the next six years. But what we're looking at is that we'll spend approximately $530,000, and we have sufficient funds to be able to meet those costs. The existing full revale cost us $460,000 this year. So you can see the difference between a statistical is about a $200,000 difference when you look at a statistical versus a full revaluation. We had about $600,000 that was budgeted, that's why you've got the $200,000 that's there. And again, the key here is that that 200 means that we don't have to appropriate those dollars over the next six years. There's no questions, Town Hall. The Town Hall, here we're showing that we have a reserve fund balance of $159,000. Now, that $159 is net of $30,000 that we expect to spend during the 1213 year in terms of improvements that would be put in this building. One of them is the, in this room, being able to deal with the damage to the dormer, as well as potentially dealing with some additional painting projects that are necessary. One of the key items that I also have directed staff to begin is the development of plans and specifications for the installation of a full generator for this building. One thing that we saw very definitely with the hurricane Sandy, or superstorm, whatever you want to call it, is that we need to have this building available with full power for us to be able to properly manage emergency conditions. You know, having been here for a lot of years, before computers even existed in the building, it was a different time. But today, the need for communications, both at the state level and at the federal level during, for the storm management, it is important for us to be able to have the capability of operating the facility. Also, we had three days of unpaid Also, we had three days of unpaid or, or full-paid work without, you know, it was unproductive paid time because we couldn't open the building without the heat or the electric. What we need to do is to spend about ninety thousand dollars for that generator, for the full installation. We'll have the, the work will be completed as far as spec development and order, and I would expect that we should be able to get that thing installed hopefully within the next six months. This wasn't, this was a project that was listed in the eighteen-nineteen year, I think, in the current year Capital Improvement Program. And what we're looking at is moving that up in the schedule because we do have the dollars available. And again, the beauty of having the money available is we can reassign it based on changing needs or identification of changing needs. Al, did you have a question?
Looking at air conditioning for the Town Hall, do you ever foresee the town chambers being air-conditioned?
One of the reasons it wasn't air-conditioned was because we were dealing with historical preservation at the time when the building was, when, when this facility was put back into shape. I think that, that it's something that we should look at. At this point, we don't have anything budgeted for that. If it was a council prerogative and they wanted us to at least do the needs analysis and the cost estimate, we could do that.
The second question that I've had is, does the [inaudible] school use that as an emergency shelter? Is that a need for [inaudible]?
What, what we're doing with that is, we did a full debrief after the storm. We were not satisfied with the conditions that we had at the high school. We had an analysis done through the school department, the new, new physical plant manager who's done an excellent job. And what we find is that the Broad Rock School has a generator that will power the entire building. The only thing it doesn't power is the fans above the stoves. What they're looking at doing is being able to ensure that they can change that over, and what that would do is to provide us with better site security and a better location is the primary, and we would use the high school as a backup. I've got Chief Espier coordinating that effort for us. We have met with Town and Arrogance in an effort to continue to have a regional shelter. We have also sat in that debrief with the Red Cross for us to work with the Red Cross as a Red Cross shelter. So yes, we're looking at, at, at what did take place each time we've opened shelters in the last couple of years, and how we can make for a better operation. And we are working at that. The, even if we had full generator power at the high school, the difficulty with the high school is the location of the gym versus the location of the cafeteria. There's too much of a distance between the two for site security. At a Broad Rock, we would have the gymnasium directly across from the cafeteria and meeting room. We would have the full power, and we would also have better means of access in egress. At the high school, one of the problems that we were concerned with is that having at least, in, in any public safety facility, we want two means of access. Technically, there's only one means of access with the high school unless we took the bollards out to go through the back street. So it would provide us with better access at Broad Rock, so that, that is under, underplanning at this point. There was a number of things in the debrief that we've got as open items at this point that we will be working on, both as a shelter, working with Arrogance, and hopefully developing a better coordination with the university in terms of their operations and the impact that it has on the municipality. So yeah, we're working on that. All right, if we, if we move on, next item is the municipal planning. As far as municipal planning, we're holding eighty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars in that reserve. We're not looking to have any money go in that over the next six years, but we're looking to spend down seventy-eight thousand dollars. One of the things we were doing was, on a yearly basis, appropriating money for GIS equipment replacements. We're now bringing that in as a component of the planning reserve. So within that planning reserve, you can see the different things that are GIS. The other thing that we would take is twenty thousand dollars for the Noyds Farm Master Plan Development, and we talked about this with the council. We talked about this with the council at the, at the tour, where what we would like to do is to have twenty thousand dollars available for a planning study to look at the development of a passive recreation use on the Noyds Farm property off of Route 138 that we purchased several years ago. If there's no questions, I'll move on. Information-wise, the energy program is also a no-fund for the next six years. The funding that we've received over the past three years, we've spent very well. First, we received a two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar grant. That money was used to be able to provide the investment-grade audit of all municipal and school buildings, and we used the results of that to be able to prioritize actual physical improvements within our, our infrastructure. The Department of Public Works, we replaced all of the windows in the Public Services Building for sixty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. Peacedale Library and the Town Hall, we've replaced the heating systems for a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. And we've also spent about forty-three thousand dollars on replacement or installation of natural gas for our two main pumping stations. We're also just completing, I think it's complete at this point, Chief, the light replacement at the Public Safety Building. All of the lights have been replaced there. For both the Town Hall, the library, and public, and the Public Safety Building, we should be looking at considerable energy savings, both in the natural gas versus oil, as well as the electricity for the lighting. Lighting reductions will be as much as fifteen percent at the police station. So we've used that money wisely. We're not appropriating or recommending appropriation of local dollars to be used for additional energy efficiency programs. If we see that there is cost benefit to additional work, we work closely with National Grid, we'll bring that forward. But at this point, we've spent all of the dollars that are available. I think we've made some, some major inroads in reducing our carbon footprint as a community, and we'll continue to look at what opportunities are out there, but there are no dollars that are appropriated for the next year on that project. The information technology is a program for the replacement of all of the governmental financial management systems in the community. The council approved the selection of a consultant that assisted us in putting a comprehensive needs assessment together this past summer. We went out for an RFP. The RFP was answered in November, and since the receipt of the RFP, we've also had, at this point, approximately three full weeks, eight hours each day for three weeks of reviews of various softwares that meet the different needs of the community. Those software suites that we're looking at really are in five different areas. One is for all of the financial management, for our general ledger, payroll, and, and HR. All of that would be under one system. Second would be for, for the tax assessment and tax collection component. Third suite would be with water and sewer billing and, and collection. And fourth would be for permits, building permits particularly. And this will give us an opportunity to be able to grow over the next several years into being able to provide 24/7 service to, to the customer base, hopefully, where we would be able to have, for ease of business use, people being able to submit applications to the town at two o'clock in the morning if they wanted to. That's not going to happen immediately, but what it, what we're doing here is looking at what's the next ten-year horizon, fifteen-year horizon of where we need to be. The last time Alan and I went out for software services was back in the eighties. It served us well. But we're at a point now where we're anticipating that the overall cost will be somewhere in the area of one point two million dollars to service the town and the school departments. One of the things that we've done is gone hand-in-hand with the schools as far as looking at the financial management systems. Why? Because we believe that we should be using uniform financial management practices as we go, go forward, so that there's greater ease of, of workflow between the two agencies. And as we go forward, if there's consolidation availabilities, this type of software upgrades should provide us with a better opportunity to work with that. We had hoped to have the full package in terms of recommendation available in December. We have been doing our due diligence in terms of working with various companies. Unfortunately, you're not going to hire one company to do every one of these things. At this point, we're working with about, with three different software vendors, and we're looking to develop contracts with each of those. One of the things that we do in the development of the software contract is we, we're not only looking at the purchase of the licensing of the software, but we have to look at the implementation cost, as well as the data conversion, and the training costs necessary to use the new software. So then, if you're dealing with companies out of Michigan, or you're dealing with people out of Maine, you have to look at what's your cost of, of travel going to be, and, and how are we going to put that into the contracts? We are getting closer. I'm hopeful that we'll have a full recommendation to the council, probably with three different vendors and an additional consultant to assist us in the implementation phase. This isn't an overnight project. This is a project that will probably take between twenty-four and thirty-six months for full implementation. What we'll have to do is to prioritize which items go first, second, and third, and how they integrate with one another. So there's a great deal of detail here, but at the same time, we're being very cautious to make sure that what we do will hopefully serve the community for the next twenty years. Al, I don't know if you want to comment. You've been directly involved with this one as well, and I need water.
I'll give Steve a chance to catch his breath, and, but certainly the system, we, we have spent a, a great deal of time, and, and as Steve mentioned, you know, one time we had, I think, fifteen, eighteen people in here from town and, and school departments. So everybody got a chance. We, you know, went to them as far as getting their input, as far as the softwares, which one they preferred. So we think we've come up with three ideal solutions. It's taken a while to iron the contract terms out, but we're working on that now. It's really going to be a, you know, a, a great tool as far as going forward. Obviously, the benefits, we won't see the real benefits until three years down the road. Once you get the data in there, you have three years' worth of history. But I think it will be a, a major improvement from the system that we have now that has clearly served us well. But this will be real-time data. As Steve mentioned, it eventually, hopefully, will be a 24/7 where residents will be able to go online, whether it's paying their taxes, putting in the information for building permits. So it really has a great deal of potential. The implementation and the conversion time, it, it's going to be a painful process, but the, the benefits far outweigh what that time commitment is going to take over the next couple of years.
Hopefully, we'll get back to you folks within the next three to four weeks, but we think that we can get those contracts ironed out. But the due diligence is, is very important because the costs, as they would have been on the initial proposals, to what they will be when we complete the contracts with them, will be sizably different. Because what we're trying to do is to look at each of the contingencies and make sure that, that there's a full identification. The worst thing you can do is have a contract where you say, gee, I didn't know I was paying for that. Because some of these things can be very, very expensive, particularly when you look at conversion of existing records. So one other thing that we need to point out here is that because this would be a municipal and school operation, there would be a cost sharing for all of this. What we've put in the detail is that we would expect that each of the various funds, whether it's the general fund, the school fund, the utility funds, or even the guild, would be paying a portion of the overall cost associated with that one point two million dollars. And what that would, that proportionate cost will be based on what the utilization levels would be. You know, when we look at things like the tax program, well, the tax program, if seventy percent of the taxes go to the school department, we would assume seventy percent of the costs should be associated with the schools for us to be able to license that software and to administer it, those types of things. Those are still decisions that we are making with the school department. This is also a project that will also require the school committee to sign off because the previous town council had set aside three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project from fund balance last year, as, I think it was in June. What we're looking at is the school department is also assigning three hundred and fifty thousand, but based on the cost that we're seeing, it'll probably exceed the three fifty level, at least for the schools, based on the cost shares that we're initially looking at. But we're going to need to come up with the final contracts, come up with the final cost, do a cost-sharing distribution, get consensus on that, and then bring that before council and school committee. So we've still got a lot, a lot of work left on this project, but we should bring it to closure quite soon. That brings us to safety, public safety programs, which is on page fifty-two. When we deal with the public safety program, again, we're dealing with the capital reserves. Within the capital reserves, there's three elements for the public safety program. One is for the computer systems, two is for the communication system, and three is for the building. And I think it's, it's self-explanatory. With the computers, what we're, what we look at is coming up with, there's a detailed listing of all of the computer equipment that's used within the public safety function, its age and its cost of replacement, and the term of functional obsolescence that's associated with that type of equipment. We then look at what the replacement schedule will be for all of that equipment, as well as if there's expansions of equipment needs. We then look at a reserve schedule where we look at spending various dollar amounts. And again, we're putting the dollars in that we anticipate spending, but we won't spend the money unless the equipment has been, is something that needs to be replaced. So if the computer we think is going to be replaced this year, doesn't need to be replaced this year, they won't replace it. But this also provides us with the flexibility to be able to make sure that we keep the computer systems both within the police vehicles themselves and within the facility itself up to snuff. And what, the forecast is that over a six-year period, they'll need to spend about two hundred and four thousand dollars in this, in this area. This is another area where on a yearly basis, on the pay-as-you-go, you're putting money into the reserve to be able to provide necessary dollars to be able to spend over that six-year period. The communication systems, same exact explanation. We're looking at all of the equipment that's within the communication system, what its useful life expectancy is, and what its cost of replacement is, and building that into a schedule. Again, future-year capital, capital improvement program funding through the operating budget is also necessary here in the amount of fifty thousand. Same thing with the, with the public safety building reserve for the facility itself. As you can see in the thirteen-fourteen year, they're looking at HBA seat chiller and garage door improvements. During the current year, things like the parking lot being re-oiled and, for maintenance purposes, were done, coming out of this fund. So again, you're putting money in with anticipated expenses, yet you'll spend based on when you need to spend, but you've got to have the dollars available in that checking account. Overall, public safety, capital improvements over the next six years would be about four hundred and ten thousand dollars. One thing I would make sure new members are aware of is that we don't take the- One thing I would make sure new members are aware of is that we don't take the police vehicles as a capital improvement. Why? They don't last five years. We're replacing them in an 18, 24-month period, so they wouldn't really qualify. So they come through the operating budget. So yeah, we're spending $410,000 here, but if you took the equipment for the vehicles that we have, we probably spend, on average, of four replacement vehicles a year, $125,000 a year on vehicles through the cap, that doesn't go through the capital budget. So you would add another $400,000, $500,000 onto your cost here. So over the course of six years, you're probably close to a million dollars in real spending other than just your operational needs for the, for the public safety component, for computers, equipment, communications equipment, and facility upkeep. And I think all will agree that the facility, in its 11th year, is in good, good condition. The next item is the East Petunia Beach water line. I think this council is well familiar with what our needs are here. We've talked about it considerably since the storm occurred. The picture that we're showing on the board at this point is, yes, that's Lucian's legs. And not a pretty picture, is it? But this is where the, where the water line was uncovered based on the sand being blown off during the storm, and there was a fracture on the pipe itself. Actually, the pipe became disconnected. So over a, about a 24-hour period, we relied on the 400,000 gallons of water that were sitting in the Green Hill Tank to be able to provide for water service and, and water pressure for about 1,700 of the customers that we had within that system. The South Shore system has about 2,400 customers. 1,700 of them are on the side of where the breach occurred, so they would have been particularly impacted. Now, yes, it was a serious break in the pipe. It was a repair that was possible, and if we needed, if there was a more severe, if there was a misquamicant type of disruption, and we lost several hundred feet of pipe, we would be able to do a above-ground pipe transfer to allow for the water to be re-energized into that system short-term. But what we need to do is provide a permanent solution to provide redundancy in the travel of the water. The council's approved in December the, the contract for the design work on this project. We're showing a million to a million and a half dollars as a, as a forecast price. We're not sure what that dollar amount is. We're also looking to see if there's any state or federal dollars that may be made available to offset some of this cost. Because with the limited number of customers that you have, let's say you had 2,500 customers that were going to be impacted with the cost, for every million dollars over a 20-year period, they would be paying, you know, a surcharge of $20 a year plus interest. So it's not a small dollar amount based on the number of customers that you have, particularly if it exceeded a million dollars. If it was a $2 million project, you know, we would be up to almost a $40 surcharge before interest. And so when you add the interest in there, you'd probably be close to the $50 on average for a 20-year period for that line installation. So we've got to look at whether, whether there's funding sources available. In addition, if the funding sources aren't available, how are we going to make that economically viable for the residents that rely on that water system? So that, that's a project that was not on the current-year improvement program, but certainly has taken a front seat as we go forward. I want to now go to the last section that we're going to cover tonight, and that starts on page 88. And that, page 88 is the start of the pay-as-you-go. And I've talked about the pay-as-you-go, pay-as-you-go a lot already. And again, what that is, is the capital budget. When you look at a six-year capital improvement program, the first year of that capital improvement program is called the capital budget. That capital budget then goes into your operating budget as a line item. So what we're looking at is what is the line item that'll be included in the 13, 14 year as the capital budget? Those are the dollars that'll then either be used to fund specific projects or that will go into the capital reserves in advance of project needs that are, have been discussed already tonight. The first we talked about was the public works infrastructure for the 640,000. We've already touched on that. It deals with the road overlay program. It deals with stormwater management, and this is on page 91, if you're following there. The overall cost of the program, as I said earlier, is $8,043,000, of which 3.8 million will come from the pay-as-you-go for the first year at that 640. On the road overlay program, what we're looking at is starting a new program, which was first funded in the current-year budget, which would be pavement overlay, which is a two-inch finish cost plus a leveling cost. Cost is estimated at about $45 a running foot or linear foot. This is as opposed to a full reconstruction like we did on Stony Fort or Schoolhouse Road at $110. The, the road overlay, what we're looking at doing is four roads in the 13, 14 year. Those roads would be South Road, about 9,600 feet from 138 to Curtis Corner, Fairgrounds Road from 138 to Wade's Corner, which 2,100 feet, Stony Fort, another 2,300 feet, and Glen Rock, 8,200 feet from 138 to the Exeter Town Line. Now, if we did that, all of those roads, that would be about 22,200 linear feet, or about four miles, let's say. When you consider the fact that we spend about $185,000 a year for stone sealing, and that gets us about eight miles, essentially, you're treating 12 miles of road between your stone seal program and your overlay program. With 150 miles of road, and assuming that your improvements are going to last 10 years in either of the programs, you're still not meeting all of what your needs would be. So essentially, what you're doing is you're assuming that you're going to get more than a 10-year life, which means that you're then going to be looking at allegation on the roads itself, as well as potholes that are going to need to be filled and additional maintenance work. That's the day-to-day stuff. As you can see from the file pictures that are there, we have a number of roads which are falling apart. So this is an aggressive program, but it's also not a program where some communities let their roads go for 10, 15 years and then put out a $5 million bond. Well, to do that means that five, that 10 years from now, you've still got 10 years of paying on the bond, and the roads are unraveling again. So what you want to try to do is, within financial means, do as much work as possible and get the best bang for your buck. Would I like to reconstruct every road and put in two inches of a base cost and two inches of a, of a final cost and be able to reset elevations? Yes. But I also think it's more important for us to service more mileage of road to provide a better product for the residents than to do just a few roads. So what we'll be looking at doing is approximately 12 miles. If we can continue the program and get more aggressive with it and get that 640,000 up to 700,000 in a later year, we may be able to expand the program further. The other problem that I run into, though, is the amount of work that we're looking for public services to provide oversight for at this point gets to a point where we've got too many road projects going. We would have to hire third-party services, which then costs us more money. So we've got to balance what can we accomplish with the workforce that we have and what can we accomplish with the financial resources available to us. This is a balancing act. You're going to have some people who say you're spending too much. You're going to have a lot of others that are going to say you're not spending enough. What we're trying to do is to deal with the most serious road defects and to be able to repair them in a number of different ways, either with stone seal or with overlay. Understand that even with the roads that we overlay, we may go back eight to 10 years from now and stone seal those roads. So it's not like you can say, well, gee, I'm done with the road for 10 years. A lot of road life is based on the traffic counts that are on it, as well as the weight of the vehicles that are using it. So we have to look at, at all of those different things as we go forward. But I think that if we can come up with this type of a schedule and try to meet this type of a schedule, that we will be able to get a good deal of the real seriously impacted roads serviced over the next three to five years. And then we're going to have to look at the whole thing again and say, can the program or should the program be expanded out? The second component of the, of the town's public works program deals with TMDL implementation. And for our new members, TMDL is a total maximum daily load, which is the, the load is the amount of pollution of a certain type that's allowed into a water body before the water body is impacted from being able to be used for its, its, its prime purpose. We have, in arrangements with federal EPA and state, state environmental, a program which dedicates $100,000 a year toward this effort of meeting TMDLs. South Kingston has seven different water bodies that have been adversely impacted, where the level of pollution has to be reduced to be able to meet those standards set by the federal government under the Clean Water Act. We believe that in all seven cases, it is literally impossible for us to be able to remediate and reduce the loads to the levels that are necessary to meet those standards. However, we must be able to demonstrate that we're making efforts to, to get to a cleaner water body at those seven locations. The first step that we'll be taking will be to deal with the Pettis Quompskett Narrow River TMDL. What we'll be doing is hiring a consulting, an environmental consultant, and in fact, I think it should be coming to you with the next meeting, John, and we will be hiring a consultant that will do a stormwater drainage catchment analysis. And what that'll look at is what are the best management practices available for diverting stormwater from the water body as a means of preventing pollution within the Narrow River? Once that analysis is completed, which is a highly expensive proposition, there'll then be a structural best management practice recommendation made for us to make physical improvements, which will be very, very costly. As noted in the budget document on page 92, we believe that we have to spend the money, yet at the same time, we're concerned and suspect that natural background conditions, particularly dealing with fecal bacteria, is not something that's going to be resolved by diverting stormwater. Or because the problem isn't man-made, it's really based on the non-anthropogenic sources of pollution, which would be waterfowl or animal in nature, where animal waste in the uplands through storm, stormwater will wash into the various water bodies. We don't expect that we'll ever be able to take control of the TMDLs, but we do believe that we need to make concerted effort to show progress in addressing the issue. Is it good money spent well? I'm not sure that it is, but I think that we do have a responsibility to attempt to minimize man's impact on those water bodies. If we can, 10 years from now, sit back and say, the man-made pollution issues have been addressed at those seven locations. No, we haven't met the TMDLs, but the reason we haven't met the TMDLs is not related to human habitation of the properties, then I think that we've done more than our share to be able to work with those environmental agencies. $100,000 a year is a commitment that I don't think many communities have made at this point. In fact, we're not aware of any. But for some reason, it seems as if most of the environmental research that's done in this state on water bodies, probably because of the proximity of the university, occurs on our water bodies. So there's a greater resource of material to document pollution levels in South Kingston than there would be in many other communities. This TMDL is also going to affect state DOT as well, because state DOT is a contributor to road runoff, will also be responsible for minimizing their footprinters. And it'll be interesting to see how the state agencies coexist in terms of the conflicting missions that each of them will be serving. We move on drainage improvements. There's only one drainage improvement that's anticipated outside of TMDL development, and that's $30,000 that's been set aside probably now for eight years for improvements on Jerry Brown Farm Road, dealing with some of the ponding issues. Based on the land acquisition with the land trust and the town obtaining drainage rights along Jerry Brown Farm Road, if we can get on the east side of the road the approvals to be able to cut back the brush and to be able to do some type of meaningful drainage, that $30,000 would, would be used for those purposes. Again, the beauty of having a, a reserve fund provides us with the opportunity to earmark the money and then spend the money once we have the proper approvals in place, because any approvals of stormwater here is also going to take coastal resource approvals as well as D E M. So 30,000 is profiled within the budget as being a, a dollar amount held aside for that purpose. We also have to deal with the town's bridges, and bridges are shown on page 93. What we're looking at is second-year funding of a three-year program, which will put $75,000 aside for improvements to the Church Street Bridge, and that's the, the, the bridge at, or in close proximity to, to Columbia Street. And that's the main bridge that, near Technical Industries. That bridge, we periodically have to deal with regrouding of the bridge and dealing with some of the fractures that, that occur within the, within their stone veneer. And so we're looking at setting aside the money. This is based on the last study that was done, because we do a bridge study every several years, and it looks at the 11 bridges in town that are subject to town maintenance. So at this point, we're trying to set aside proper funds within the reserve to be able to deal with improvements that'll occur in the 14, 15 year associated with the Church Street Bridge. We also have to deal with dams. The town is responsible for maintenance of any town-owned dam. Some of the older members of the council will recall that we have rebuilt several dams over the past 10 years, most recent one being at, at Factory Pond. We also have rebuilt at California Gym. We've rebuilt at Acea Pond, and we've rebuilt at Old Mountain, Old Mountain Park. So our dams are in good shape. The town dam at, Wakefield Dam at Main Street has some difficulties. The most recent dam analysis that was completed showed that there was defect with the low-water valve. John's been able to work out arrangements with federal Fish and Wildlife and NOAA for them to replace a fish ladder and also to deal with the difficulties associated with that low-water device. Why this dam has the ability to lower the Sogutucket River is beyond us, or why the state... the state wants us to ensure that we continue to have the ability to do that, I'm not sure. But the improvements will be made on that dam through the improvements that are coming in with the federal money to be able to deal with the fish ladder improvements and the reconstruction of the fish ladder. What we're proposing is that $25,000 be put into the 13, 14-year that'll be held in reserve for future dam maintenance. Under the state's dam maintenance program, we're required to have inspections completed on all of our dams, and any deficiency reports that are issued with those dam inspections, we have a reasonable period of time to be able to make those corrections. So we need to set aside dollars at this point to be able to have the funds in place should we find defects in any of the dams that we own and are responsible for maintenance. The next items that are shown on pages 94 and 95 is the public works equipment replacements for the year. There's three projects that, or three, three things that we're looking to do. Two are replacements of existing equipment. One's a pickup truck, one's a medium-sized dump truck, and the third is a new acquisition for a asphalt pavement box that allows us to heat the asphalt to be used for pothole fills during winter months. This is becoming more and more important to us. Defects within our road network can cost us money in terms of claims against the town for property damage vehicles, or if they're, some type of defect is responsible for loss of property or causes an accident. The pickup truck to be replaced is a 2004 pickup with 92,000 miles. This is one of seven pickup trucks that are within our fleet that are used for snow plowing purposes. The second item for $165,000 is one of the medium-sized dump trucks that's used for snow plowing, sanding. We've increased the value that we've put on the replacement for this truck. What we're looking to do is, with the replacements, go with, with truck bodies that will be stainless steel, so that we will get greater life. One of the biggest problems with our trucks is that the trucks are still in good shape on a chassis basis, but they're destroyed based on the sand and salt utilization. Even with the constant cleaning that's done on those vehicles, as you can see with the truck that's in the picture, you can see where they've rebuilt the trucks. We've got an excellent staff, as far as the mechanical staff, that does a lot of work in terms of rebuilding these vehicles. But we also are looking at the number of hours that are necessary for the reconstructs. It may be more efficient for us to experiment with the more expensive truck bodies and be able to minimize what our expenses are that are associated with reconstructing the vehicles, you know, three to five years after we buy them. So this will be an experiment. For the next two years, we're looking at the stainless steel bodies as a, on the trucks. Then we'll see what type of a life change we get based on the, on the conventional truck body that's been purchased in the past. The third item at $18,000 is the hot mix box, which is, again, something that allows us to have hot patch rather than cold patch. I think anybody that's driven on a road that's had cold patch knows that it just doesn't stay in the hole. And it, you know, it's out within a couple of hours on a heavily traveled road, so you've got continued maintenance costs where you're back on a weekly basis for the same hole. This would give us the ability to properly deal with potholes. Make no mistake about it, in the spring, once we get the thaw and the refreeze, the frost heaves, as well as the potholes, are a major problem for us to deal with. This piece of equipment will assist the department in making more efficient repairs. The police department, I've already talked about the various equipment acquisitions that they're on, on a schedule based on the equipment's useful life. Anticipated equipment replacements over the next two years. The department's looking at the networking equipment, workstations, and the notebooks that are in the police vehicles. And again, it'll be replaced on an as-need basis. Right now, we're looking at about $70,000 in that reserve to be able to address ongoing needs. When we look at the building, we're looking at the improvements with the chiller, which is part of the HVAC, as well as the controllers on HVAC at the building, and variable frequency drives. This would provide greater efficiency or less energy use with the installation of those drives, as well as the replacement of some of the overhead doors on the backside of the station. We're also looking to replace the animal control vehicle. We have only one vehicle that's used for the animal control program. It'll have, has well over 80,000 miles at this point. We will replace it when it's necessary to be replaced. Replacement value is anticipated to be around $30,000, which would include the cage installation within the vehicle itself. Emergency Management Services, the, we're looking for $68,000, of which the prior council has already approved $54,000. If you recall back in June, the department came forward and said, "We can replace three of the EKG defibrillators at a, with brand-new ones at a much cheaper cost and have identical equipment in each of our vehicles so that staff would be used to using the same equipment, regardless of what truck they were on." The council agreed at that time to take $54,000 out of the building reserve to go toward that acquisition. So what we'll look at is $54,000 of this $68,000 will be appropriated in the 13, 14-year, but it will not go into the diagnostic equipment reserve, it'll go back into the building reserve. The other $14,000 would be used to purchase a replacement on the CPR device for chest compressions. So that $14,000 would be a replacement of an existing, existing equipment for the paramedic vehicle, too. And this would allow all of the, again, for us to create uniformity on the equipment that, regardless of the vehicles that our EMTs are utilizing. So $54,000 goes back on an expenditure that's already been approved, and the other 14 goes toward the replacement of the CPR device. Also, when we had the town tour, we spent considerable time looking at the buildup that's going to be necessary for EMS at the south station. The council approved a contract for $28,000 for A and E development, I think that was in December as well, for $28,000. Once we see what the cost is, I'm sure that next year, we're going to have to look at revising this program, we're going to put $26,000 in. Right now, we've got about $107,000 that will be available. Once we subtract the 28, we're back down to about $82,000, $83,000 for actual shovel work. So I think that if the project comes in at a reasonable cost, we're still going to see an appreciable need in next year's budget for the, on the pay-as-you-go. But I think what we need to do is, the philosophy that this town has always employed with capital improvements, is do it once, do it right, and spend the dollars that are necessary for the services that we need. So we'll need to look at what options are available to us, agree on a development plan, and then determine what type of funding costs we will be able to put in. We'll also be attempting to look on whether there's any FEMA dollars or EMA dollars that may be available to offset some of those costs. There's also five projects that are, starting on page 97, that are general government projects, and they're really transfers of the information technology, the software that we talked about. We've got $10,000 a year going forward into that reserve fund. Town Hall, $5,000 going into that reserve fund. We need to replace one of the, I believe it's five pool cars that's used between the assessors' office and building officials' office, as well as being pool services for the other municipal departments that have gone out of town travel. We'll be replacing a 2002 Chevrolet with 98,000 miles on it. I think that, and we will replace it on an as-need basis. Communications Department, as I mentioned earlier, we normally put in about $5,000 a year so that there's proper funding there for larger projects that are necessary. One thing you don't want to do is to hire a company that comes in that mobilizes and pay mobilization costs more than once. If we can plan the work enough years in advance, we can make sure that we get the best bang for our buck before we let those contracts. The last section that we deal with tonight is on a utility funds. As I mentioned earlier, on utility funds, everything comes out of rate base, none of it comes out of property taxes. For the water fund, you've got five different projects in the pay-as-you-go. One is the repairs to the pump station road. Council went up the pump station road. The macadam on that single-lane road needs to be upgraded. We're expecting that that would cost around $25,000. We're also looking at additional leak detection program monies of $25,000. Leak detection is necessary in our water system because we have a great deal of unaccounted for water. Right now, we're looking at about 20, over 20% of the water that we acquire from Wakefield Water, United Water, is unaccounted for. So that means that allegedly, it's going through a meter, but it's not going out through one of the meters through one of our customers. So it means that we have leaks that need to be detected within the system. The department has, has made a concerted effort over the past two years and has really had two consultants in to do different things in the middle bridge system, and we have found a couple of leaks, but nothing as large as, has to be out there at this point. So we need to continue to put money aside for the department to use on ongoing leak detection services. Third component is that we need to purchase a small tilt bed dump trailer, and this would be used to transport a mini excavator that was purchased in the current year. And it'll also be for materials that can be dumped through the use of the vehicle, rather than having to make use of one of the large dumps from public service, the Public Works Department. And we'll be looking at updating software for integration with the GIS system. Right now, with GIS, all of our water and sewer systems are on the GIS mapping. This would provide us with the ability to have iPad uses in the field for being able to deal with different projects that are ongoing, or to be able to deal with identification of different components of the system. That is 20,000 there. There's also 20,000 for the GIS anticipated in the wastewater for that program. We'll also be looking at how that GIS integration will fit within the financial management systems as well. I'm not going to spend any more time on East Mattoonik. Again, we're looking at, we had set aside $20,000 toward the engineering. Certainly, the engineering is considerably more from that, but it'll come out of retained earnings within the Water Enterprise Fund. When we look at the wastewater fund for the 2013, 2014 capital improvements, we're looking at six different items totaling about $325,000. One of the important things on wastewater that's atypical for new council to be aware of is that costs associated with the wastewater fund, the cost allocation is based on the utilization of each of the different components. When you look at the detail that's presented on page 99 of the capital improvement program budget, you'll see that when we deal with improvements at the wastewater treatment plant, South Kingston pays for 35.8% of the costs, Narragansett 44 and the University 19. That's based on the 11, 12 actual utilization of that component. Now, the Silver Lake Pumping Station isn't used by Narragansett at all, obviously, so they're not going to pay toward any of the costs associated with facilities at Silver Lake. 64 and a half, 64.9 or 65% of the flows through that pumping station on South Kingston are associated, so we're responsible for 65% of the cost. Conversely, on the Kingston Pump Station, 90% of the flows come from the university, so if we spend $100,000 on an improvement at the Kingston Pump Station, then 90,000 of that, 100,000 would come from the university. So there's, there's eight different major cost centers that are identified within the wastewater system, that we then look at what the flows are through those cost centers to be able to assign costs. So yes, we're looking at a $325,000 program, but of that $325,000 program, only a portion of that is South Kingston tax, South Kingston rate base associated. Wastewater, we talked about the six projects. We'll run through those quickly. The funding would be used for the replacement of the wastewater treatment facility's roof. Here you see that it's a $40,000 job. South Kingston rate basis will be responsible for $14,336. When we look at the local pump stations, this is 100% South Kingston cost. What we need to do is to be able to replace, we'll be replacing the common udus, which is really, it's a, this provides an ability within the pump station to chop up any type of solid materials that are coming through or any other types of waste debris. So this takes it through a grinder, for lack of a better term, and macerates the materials as a way of getting those safely into the flow of the system. Since it's 100% South Kingston cost, that $35,000 at the local pump stations would be all our cost. Kingston Pump Station, we're looking at the generator set being replaced after 30 years. The engineering is being done on this work this year. We're expecting $160,000 cost, of which we would pay 10.24% of the $16,000 cost. The wastewater headworks, the flows that come in from South Kingston URI and from Narragansett all come through the headworks, which is really the entry point into the wastewater treatment facility. Given the corrosive nature of the wastewater influent, repairs are periodically necessary on the interior concrete walls within the intake area. And we're expecting to spend $30,000 in the 2013, 14-year, of which South Kingston's share would be about $10,750. Again, I have an open invitation to any of the council members that want a, a visit to wastewater treatment plant. We will need about two hours to take you through the whole facility, but you're more than welcome to come down and to see the operation. I think it's something that our staff is very proud of, and I certainly am proud of, for a facility that was built in the 19, mid-1970s. The meticulous care that's been, been had in terms of equipment, as well as the efficiency improvements to make that into a 21st century facility, I think a second to none in the state, and would love to be able to show it to you so that you have a better understanding of what the capital needs are. of what the capital needs are. We're also looking at rolling stock replacement. We need a, a new four-wheel drive vehicle with the, with the crane. That's necessary for delivery of materials that are picked up at either the local or the main pumping stations or the transport of materials, purchased materials. Looking at about a $40,000 cost for that vehicle with the ancillary equipment associated with it, and a cost of around $26,000 in South Kingston's cost share. And as we mentioned, GIS upgrades, there'll be a placeholder of $20,000, which would be to deal with that software enhancement that is used principally by the wastewater or the water departments. That concludes what we're to look at tonight. Tomorrow night, we would look at fair share development fees, affordable housing impacts, as well as looking at leisure services, which is the senior program and recreation program activities. The last couple of slides that I have is presenting pages 104 through 107, and this is really the pay-as-you-go portion of your capital budget, the items that we've just gone through. You can see the road improvement program for the $640,000 in the first year. You can see that, that that road improvement program shows 3.89 million over the six years. Those are the dollars that are funneled into the long-term program to be able to make those proj, those programs properly funded. Each of the different items we've talked about are, are listed here. This takes us through all of the general fund for the first two pages of that, so pages 104 and 105 is the general fund. You can see that that means that we would have an increase of $22,000 over what was budgeted in the 2012, 13 year. The water program at 102,000, up from 60, that's not an error. The reason we're going up $42,000 is we have the ability to do that because the debt service that was associated with the purchase of the meters, which was around the $40,000 a year over a five-year period, there will not be any debt service that the water fund will be servicing in the 13, 14 year. So what we're able to do is to increase what the capital needs are over the six-year period without really having impact on the rate base. On wastewater program, we're not looking at really any major changes. We're looking at around a $325,000 a year contribution to the overall wastewater program budget that would come from capital improvements. Again, only a portion of that is South Kingston rate base associated. That gets us to the end of the presentation for this evening. So if the council has any questions, I'd be glad to try to address anything that I haven't, haven't given you full information on so far.
At this time, I'd like to see if there's any questions from the town council? Jim?
Yes, Steve, did I hear you right, a 20% leakage when you were talking about the leak detection program?
Yeah, in fact, when I looked at the numbers, it's about 23% system-wide at this point.
That's an awful lot of water. I know it's spread over quite an area, but...
There's, there's, you know, well, a couple of things that we need to look at. One is, I want to do an analysis on whether the meters, the master meters that are used are in fact properly recording. And two, you have to look at the age of the systems. Some of the systems, particularly in the Green Hill area, go back to probably the late 1960s when they were installed. When they were installed, they were also installed in PVC pipe, which is not the most secure pipe for, for this type of a utility. So there's a number of things that can be occurring. One, it's very difficult where these water systems are located to find infiltration because we're in high water tables. So it's not a case where you're going to see a water leak because you're going to see green grass in an area that's burned and the rest, because to a great extent, we've got high water tables for most of the water system. And the reason we've got the water system is because we had high water tables and salt intrusion into the drinking well that they had. But if you recall, that South Shore water system was really the marriage of, of four or five independent water systems. So some of the pipe age goes back well into the 60s. So we've got difficulty. Some of the systems may need to have line replacements that we look at. But, you know, the state standard, they want us to get to 10%. I'm not sure 10% factor is a reasonable expectation based on the age of these systems, but it's not as if the department hasn't spent considerable time and effort over the last three years trying to locate, particularly with the test studies that we've done in the Middle Bridge area. And Middle Bridge, while not back to the 60s, goes back, we installed that in, I think, 1976. So we're talking about, you know, considerable age there as well on a system with a very high water table. So yes, it's, it's a difficult chore, but one that we've got to continue to put dollars to to try to increase our efficiency.
Is there any way to measure that 23% in terms of dollars?
Well, sure there is, because what we're looking at is the, the cost differential of what we're purchasing the water for, and we can identify what that cost is, but that goes into, into the rate base. John, I don't know if you want to give any more commentary on it?
The problem we have with both of those systems are they're made of non-metallic pipes, so it's very, very difficult to try to find the leaks. Middle Bridge, we've used two technologies. We've used what's called correlators, which actually is that diagram right there. That's the more modern technology. We found no leaks. And last year, we followed up with the older technology, which is acoustics, which we found two leaks. We repaired those leaks, and there really was no appreciable reduction in the, the unaccounted for water. So I've actually met as recently as yesterday with United Water to look at the meters, and again, the meters are relatively new. They're mag meters, they're state-of-the-art meters. If the wholesale meters prove accurate, then it is leaks, and we're, you know, we're somewhat perplexed now as to how to find them. I think, other than maybe trying another consultant and going back to the more modern technology with the correlators, but it's a chore for us, and we've got to keep chipping away at it. And our goal is to do Middle Bridge first because it is the smallest system, although one leak in Middle Bridge has a much more profound effect as to what the unaccounted for water is versus one leak in the South Shore system. But high groundwater table, highly permissivity soils in the, in the pipe makes it very, very difficult to find leaks.
Other questions here at the town council table? Carol?
I just want to follow up with that. Wouldn't that leak in, that was found on, on the, in Mattoonik account for some of this? When the water line was breached with that, did you lose any water there?
Prior to hurricane, we fill both tanks, and then we isolate the valves on either side. So when that pipe breached, there was no water going through it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's the protocol when there's a hurricane.
Oh.
Yep.
The other thing that we need to get a better handle on is the amount of fire protection use that occurs, because that would be non-meeted water use, but it certainly is nowhere near the amount of unaccounted for water that we're seeing at this point.
Any further questions here at the town council table? Jim?
I'll make this short. The TMDLs, how do you measure who's to blame when we're sort of at the end of the state's intestines? How do you measure, like Narrow River, North Kingston, Narragansett ourselves, how, how do you measure who's to blame and how much money we should be putting in reserve side for that?
Some of that is the studies that we're talking about that you'll have at the next council meeting is, you've got to look at the basin area itself and the amount of, the volume of stormwater that comes in, as well as the, the water quality within the storm water. Narragansett has made improvements on their side. South Kingston's improvements were made when the sewer system was installed. And so, and that goes back 20 years now. But a good deal of the pollution that's there on, on the Middle Bridge system is fecal associated. Correct me if I'm wrong, John.
But is it also a lot of it just working its way through the soils north of that before it enters our two towns, as well as...
Well, I mean, with the seven TMDLs that the state has done, they only did what's called DNA source typing on one, and that was Green Hill Pond. And of that, they found, I think it was, my memory serves me correct, about 73% of the fecal was from non-anthropogenic sources, which were non-human related. And I would tend to believe that that percentage probably holds true for all the fecal TMDLs. The problem, and our argument has been with the state, you know, we can't control deer and rab, you know, all the, you know, wildlife, but their response has been because we've allowed impervious surface, either through roads or drainage systems or allowing people to develop their property, we facilitated the conveyance of that non-anthropogenic sources to the surface water body. Therefore, we're responsible to try to, I guess, reduce that loading to the greatest extent possible.
So we're using a formula where if there's still natural woods and grasses?
The, yeah, the, I mean, the more impervious surface you have generally, the, you know, you have a greater tendency for impaired waters. But the only way, and we could spend an awful lot of money, I think that's, we've kind of, you know, regrouped at this point, we could spend an awful lot of money trying to get, dig down deep into the science and go to every outfall and take samples and do DNA source typing, and that is very, very expensive. And I think the final result in meeting with the Region 1 EPA staff and DEM staff is even if we went through that exercise, we would still be required to do some type of structural best management practice improvements. Yep.
As, as I said before, Jim, we have major concerns with this because we want to see public dollars spent in an effort to be able to do positive things. If we can't see positive results, we're concerned with it. And there's some real serious problems. But I think that the meeting that John mentioned, we made some, some very, very good headway with EPA. Yes, we've committed about $100,000 a year, but were we to be subject to environmental lawsuits, the cost of those lawsuits that would be lost on legal transactions would be nothing compared to the, 10s of, 10s of millions of dollars we're talking about with those type of potentials. One of the things we looked at was saying we don't have the ability to do those financially, and we went back to the old super fund issue, where as far as they're concerned, you do have the ability as a community to be able to fund 40 or 50 million dollars in borrow. I do want to caution you that the, one of the other reasons that it's very important for us to start to address TMDLs in a comprehensive manner is that one of the steps that the state DEM would like to see communities take is to establish a stormwater management districts. Stormwater management districts would be very similar to sewer districts, where what you would actually do is to charge people on an annual basis for stormwater management practices. And the areas that would be most impacted would be our business, commercial base, because wherever you've got parking lots, that's where your impervious surfaces are and where the runoff is, is the most consolidated. And those type of programs, not ones that we would be supportive of, are the type of demands that could be made if we did not attempt to show good faith in terms of initiating at least program improvements that we think have some reasonable expectation of returning some value to the community.
Any other further questions? I, I just had a couple of questions, Steve. With the requests that we've had here through specific individual asking for the live televising of our town council meetings, my question is, last night I was watching Channel 50 with the Westerly Town Council, and I believe it was Verizon encoder. So I didn't know if that was something that we had checked into. We're switching over to some Verizon, and I know it's probably not a question that can be answered now, but if there is a way for live televising through Verizon with us doing some of the switching over with some of what we're using with cell phones and whatnot versus the large cost that Cox was going to charge us, and is it something that this town council, you know, would like to pursue? Because if it is, would it be something that would be included in the comprehensive, comprehensive, not comprehensive, the budget, capital improvement program budget here?
It would be a reoccurring expense, or we would go through the operations budget. We have reviewed with, with Verizon, Dale's made contacts with them, I think we're still looking in the 18 to $20,000 range? We'll give you those numbers when we get to the...
It's about $21,000 in public information budget for installation of the wideband computer, which is about, I think, the monthly pay, and I think it was from Cox, it was cheaper than Verizon, actually, and that was $895 a month. So we have $21,000 in public information budget, that those are for the network.
Right.
Yeah, based on the requests, I was going to put that into the budget document for the council consideration. I'm certainly going to have opinions on it, but I'll provide it within the budget for, for your review.
Right, and I didn't know that it, you know, if it fit into that cable, fit into the non-recurring, you know, useful for five years and value in excess of 10,000. And I'm glad that, you know, you, you checked out prices with Verizon. I know that we...
We checked, because we're both at Cox.
And they're both high.
And I have, two years ago, someone from Cox, and that's the hardware in New York.
Thank you for doing that work, that was looking into some of what has happened here at the table. Second question, I know can't answer, can't be answered tonight, but in this capital improvement program budget, I don't see anything with the schools, with the computers, and if we can just have an answer to that when we meet with them on January 16th, that would be helpful.
Again, we have requested the school department to fit in the capital budget. We have some cooperation with the schools as far as that's concerned. We have not seen anything from them as far as what capital cost they would have. A good deal of the technology dollars with the schools are going through federal grant money. Within the capital improvement program that, that they have put forward, they do have dollars that are shown for computer technology equity. So they've got 115,000 on equity and equipment replacement, and 15,000 on administrative computers. They've also got two labs at $35,000 apiece. The monies that they have suggested were necessary for computers for the new testing requirements. We haven't seen any, anything associated with whether those costs were real or... The monies that they have suggested were necessary for computers for the new testing requirements. We haven't seen any, anything associated with whether those costs were real or where the money was going to come from if, if they were necessary, so.
Thank you.
Ella, can I just add to that?
Please.
Because I, I think they haven't received the information from RIDE yet on how many computers per student, you know, whether they're going to need one for two students or one for every student. So I, I think they're struggling with that, and RIDE is behind as far as providing that information.
Thank you. Other questions?
We can ask if there's any information update for them to be prepared to discuss it when they come in on the, I believe it's the 16th.
That would be helpful. Any further questions here at the table? I'm just going to take a quick moment and ask if there's any questions from the audience. If not, again, I just want to thank Steve and Alan and all of the staff who contributed to this capital improvement program. It's definitely a detailed presentation, lot of, lot for us to digest, and it's definitely reflected the needs of our community as well as the financial corps, so thank you. Are there any other matters of interest or concern? I just want to reiterate that we have tomorrow night our second capital improvement program presentation, and then the third one on the 16th with the school committee with the adoption on January 28th. At each town council's table tonight, there was also an invitation to the Hasenfeld Bryant University training on Saturday, January 26th.